I'd like to call the meeting in order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore. Trustee Gatt.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Goff.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
Okay, welcome everyone. Counsel, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, we had a request by trustee DeVore to attend remotely. The COVID rule has expired. We do have a remote attendance rule that allows remote attendance. I understand that she's absent due to business, and that is permissible in the absence of a motion objecting to her remote attendance. So that's up to the board. If anyone wants to make a motion to object, it requires a two-thirds vote.
I'm going to permit it unless I hear an objection. Hearing none, thank you, counsel. All right, we would be at a proclamation in honor of paparazzi's 40th anniversary. Bruce and Lisa.
(laughing)
Okay, first in last time. Let me get them.
(laughing)
(inaudible) (inaudible) Wait, right here? Yeah. Thank you both for being here. Before there were just about any business on Prospect, name any business, there was paparazzi. So tonight, it's a great honor. You're both friends, almost like family. You've been good to the village, you've been good to me, and I'm honored to have you here tonight. So we have a little proclamation for both of you. Whereas before there was a popular restaurant row in Peoria Heights, there was paparazzi. And whereas Lisa Mancuso and Bruce Brown, partners in business and in life, have operated paparazzi for 40 years, an eternity in the restaurant business. And whereas paparazzi is proof that where the food and company service and feel of the place, call it familia, familia or family are excellent, people will find out, no matter how out of the way the location. And whereas Mama Brown's magic spoon may have stirred no end of pasta at paparazzi, it's Bruce's chicken and parchment that's nonpareil among central Illinois entrees, topped off by Lisa's gelato for dessert, of course. And whereas paparazzi's cozy and familiar decor, the red, green, and white of the Italian flag, the black and white photographs looks in 2023 pretty much as it did in 1983, well, let's just say it, why mess with perfection? And whereas newcomers to paparazzi tend to become customers for life, dining there for every significant occasion, from engagements and anniversaries to births and to birthdays, the whole arc of life. And whereas Lisa is the yin to Bruce's yang, she handles the business, he commands the kitchen, in the end, it all comes out full circle and it works. And whereas paparazzi is more than a restaurant, it's a community center where problems get solved, needs get funded, leaders are recruited, causes are championed. And whereas paparazzi is part of the bedrock of this community with a power all of its own. We, the Village Board and Mayor of Peoria Heights, hereby recognize Lisa and Bruce for their pioneering efforts and uncommon generosity over the years, while proclaiming them and their paparazzi restaurant official treasures of this community. It's impossible to imagine Peoria Heights without you.
Thank you.
(applause)
You're the one to...
No, that's all right.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Village Board, you hit all the points in the proclamation. You know, at times, by the way, 40 years is a long time, all right?
(laughing)
And I thought I would use this occasion of the 40th. People ask us, and Mayor, your proclamation covered a lot of the points of why this was possible. But I thought I would divulge on the 40th anniversary the secret of paparazzi, which I believe is the oldest restaurant in Peoria Heights. Here's what the secret is. Mr. Mayor, you have yourself and the trustees, you are the board of directors for the village of Peoria Heights. And I follow it a little bit, and sometimes there are pretty spirited discussions and once in a while, a divided vote. Let me tell you the secret of paparazzi. Yes, the sauce, yes, the spoon, and so many other things. But here's the secret. Paparazzi has a board of directors. It's Bruce and Lisa. And for 40 years, without exception, every one of our board votes has been unanimous. And that's why we're still here. So, living together, working together, working in today a very difficult environment, we're still here, we're still running, and tomorrow night, we open at 5:30, and everything's going to be great. Thank you all.
(applause)
I do, I will, just, the trustees, and I know some of the trustees know, we don't have all the information to you, and I know some of the people in the Heights know, coming soon to the village of Peoria Heights is another artwork by the name of Progressive Woman, and the artist is a local guy by the name of Roy Rogers. And we will be giving you some more details about that in the future, and in particular, who the sponsors are and where it will be, and I think the village and you all will be quite excited with the information.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I do have one announcement. An old friend, a dear old friend approached me recently, Mike Lewis, about putting a soda machine in Tower Park, and I checked with counsel on that. He said I could authorize it, but I still wanted to make you all aware of that, and I asked Mike to be here tonight to tell you all what he has in mind. So, Mike, if you don't mind coming up, please.
Hello, I'm Mike Lewis. Not a good public speaker, but I just, I got several soda machines, and it's a new Pepsi machine, and I had just approached Mike about putting one up here at Tower Park because there wasn't one here, and then I'd do all the maintenance and take care of it.
So, as long as there's no objection, I think it's a great idea, and we'll work out the details.
Okay.
Chris, we might need to run some power to that.
Yeah, I believe there was one out there previously by the tower underneath the balcony there, so there's probably already...
Oh, there is, okay. I kind of looked and didn't see one, but they're probably...
I'll have to look.
Okay.
But yeah, we'll definitely work that out.
All right. Too bad Pal's not around, he'd run the...
I know, he would, too. I know it.
All right, so you and I, we'll follow up on that, then.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next is approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees' meetings on June 20th, 2023, and June 27th, 2023. It asks for a motion to approve the minutes. Make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to approve the minutes. Any questions or corrections or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. We have comments from the audience. If anyone here or tonight would like to address the board, please come forward, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes.
Two for one, I guess. Bruce Brown, 43, 15, boss, my business in Peoria Heights for 40 years. I want to speak for just a moment about the action item, approval of fire department option, coming up later on the agenda. I did listen to some of the board meeting when it was presented, I think, last month, and my only thought is this. From business in Peoria Heights for 40 years, but being connected with Mr. Rutherford and others for close to 60 years, I want to give you my opinion about that. Where I want to ask you is a line item in your budget, has dollars and cents to it, that says Peoria Heights, identity. You have identity. Where does it come from? What is it? What's it composed of? Let me give you a couple examples. You've heard it from me before. Every time I'm in this building, it's not possible for me to forget the story that Bill Rutherford told me in the '70s. In the early '60s, Peoria Heights needed a new village hall. I don't know the exact date, it's here somewhere. And as you might imagine, at the time, budgets were serious business, and the general trend was a steel morton building with maybe some river rock pasted to one corner to make it look rustic, because it was inexpensive, seemed the sensible way to go. Not for Bill. What we are standing in tonight, what you're meeting in tonight, you can hold Bill Rutherford responsible. And by the way, it was not an easy sale. This is not a low-maintenance building. It was not low-budget to build. The 650-pound woodpecker screwed into the water tower. Mr. Rutherford paid for himself because it was part of the identity that he wanted to establish for this village on into the future. So what is the identity? Well, it's your police department, it's your fire department, it's your public works, it's your economic development. And it is true, the city of Peoria has all those things. You could pay the fire department a fixed amount to answer, the Peoria Fire Department to answer your fire calls. You could pay the, you know, you could pay the Peoria Police to answer your police calls. You wouldn't need those cars, you wouldn't need that maintenance, you wouldn't need that payroll, you wouldn't need those pensions. City of Peoria has an economic development department. Why do you need an economic developer? I would submit because it's your identity. I wanted to just throw in a comment about identity. A reporter told me three weeks ago, before the mayor of the city of Peoria was to give the state of the city message, that some publicity went out, and the city-generated publicity had the mayor's image with the village of the Heights water tower in the background. Identity drives things, doesn't it? And when you throw it away, it's gone forever. So I would just ask you to consider carefully and thoughtfully that sometimes it may cost more, but your identity does not have a price tag on it, but rest assured, you are the envy here, mayor and trustees of Peoria Heights, of all of central Illinois, because of your identity. So that's all I want to say. A little remiss, having been a Peoria city councilman a long time ago, if I didn't put this in. The city of Peoria has an identity, too. And like you, they don't have a line item budget that says that. But it does have an identity, and let's just close it out with a Latin, which I believe your attorneys will, I believe the phrase is res ipsa loquiter. All right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. Do the right thing.
All right, thank you, Chris. All right, who's next? Public comment. Anyone like to address the board? Please come forward now. Go in once, go in twice. Public comment is closed. We'll move on to old businesses. Is there any old business coming for the board?
I have a quick item I can bring up. Just a little update. Quite a few months ago, the board approved us getting a couple small playgrounds for some pocket parks, and I can say that one of those has been installed at Longshore Park today. It's not completed, but it's there for them to play on. We're waiting on some playground border and some mulch, but those are underway.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chandler. That's good news. Any other old business? Okay, let's get right into new business. The first is an update on code enforcement and landlord registration. Shane Murphy, welcome, Shane.
Thank you for having me back. On the handouts I passed out, you'll get all the stats there as well. Included a ordinance map, so you can kind of see which districts are which. And then we added a monthly, justice here, added a monthly, we've given out 51 notices for ordinance so far this month, or I'm sorry, last month. Looks like those have all, pretty much all been complied with, other than, it looks like two. And it's kind of nice, actually, with the drought that we've had. I was able to focus more on different items than tall grass and weeds. I was able to focus on hitting the alleys more. Sometimes there's TVs, tires, household items discarded. Occasionally, you have branches down, trees down, that type of thing. I was able to focus more on that stuff, other than tall grass and weeds for a change, which was kind of nice. Also, we've included yearly stats so far. Looks like we've written 199. These are my stats, these are not department stats. If there's a question about that, of course, the officers are out there occasionally writing the same things, towing vehicles as need be as well. And then we've included the landlord registration updates. We've done 17 inspections so far this month. We did have one that did require some follow-up. That was taken care of. They're compliant now. Nothing major, just some household items that needed adjusted. So I would say that both programs are going very well. Really happy to be part of both of those. And then we also set up the complaint portal through our website. That really seems to be picking up a lot of speed. Probably, I would say, every other day, sometimes every day, we're getting notices, complaints, different things through that. Sometimes it's landlord registration, sometimes it's ordinance, and then occasionally, we get, on the law enforcement side, we get some notices from people that aren't comfortable calling, they'd rather do it on an email basis. So that seems to be working very well also. So, trying to keep it brief tonight, I know we have a lot of things to cover, so any questions, any concerns?
No, I'm happy to see the compliance record here is really great.
Yeah, they seem to be, they know we're out there doing this now, so a few residents have gotten more than one notice, and they've caught on, and they, you know, they seem to take care of things before I get there sometimes, so that's a good thing to see.
All right, proceed, please.
All right, I'm, all good.
That it?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have another follow-up report.
Yeah.
Anyone else, then? Shane, thanks for your service.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
No, that's not an easy job, we all know that.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Next is an approval of change for, a change of use for the pump house, 1203 East Kingman Avenue. Trustee DeVore asks for a motion to approve.
She may be having difficulty hearing us, maybe.
Okay, can I get a motion from someone else, then?
I'll make a motion to approve. I don't know that this is an action item on our, well, yes, it is. I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel, go ahead, please. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a request that came from KDB Group, who is the tenant under the pump house lease over here on Kingman. Their council communicated a request that we consider a new use for a building. The current lease use is limited to popcorn and candy store, and by the request that came through their council, they were seeking consent to lease the, it would actually be a sublease, the pump house to a school.
Okay.
I had a late conversation with Mr. Berklin this afternoon, and he had expressed to me that this may not be a tenant that actually requests or ends up going through, so he asked me to take it off the agenda. Unfortunately, it was too late for that, but we are open to having discussions this evening about any other use other than a popcorn shop, if that's something my fellow trustees want to discuss.
Trustee Goff, you have?
We could, I would mention that I know that it's been brought up, that that would be an excellent place for a museum site here in Peoria Heights, where we could highlight our village. We're coming up on our 125th anniversary, and I think it would be a great use of that facility, and I would like, personally, I would like to see it become a permanent display, where we talk about the village of Peoria Heights, where we can have the pictures, or we can have the history of, you know, our public works, our fire department, our police department, our school district. There's a lot of, a lot of things that we could do in that building that I think would be a positive attraction here in Peoria Heights. And its adjacent location of the tower doesn't hurt.
I really like that idea. I think it's the best, best use of the community building, but trustee Weisenberg, you're looking this way, do you have...
Trustee, because they have you, I wish Greg was here, or Mr. Berklin was here.
I just want to apologize on his behalf, because he did tell me earlier this after, I mean, earlier, that he was unable to come.
Do you know what their overall goal is for this area? I mean, they have most of their buildings up for sale.
You know, we work hand in hand with KDB Group to try to find new uses for the, each building, but I do know, I think their Realtor is here this evening, if she wants to make any comments on that. I personally don't know what their goals are, other than that the properties are for sale.
Is this, is this the only building they lease in the area, or do they lease other buildings?
Our building, that's our building.
It's the only building?
Yes, the only building.
I would say, for the record, that was to be a gift to the community. That's my very strong recollection.
Yeah, yeah. It just seems odd if they're winding down their business, then why allegedly, or seemingly, obviously, they can't stay in business just leasing our pump house?
Right.
So what is their long-term goal? I think that's important to know when we discuss the use of the property.
I agree with you.
I don't know how they could make a profit with a museum. I mean, I don't know.
Well, thank you for the question. I've actually had many conversations with Greg Berklin and KDB, and I will continue to have those questions. I also would love to see it turned into a museum. I think it'd be an amazing asset to our community, and so that's something that I'll continue to encourage.
So I'd like to ask, counsel, there are out clauses in the lease where we could get the building back to them.
We, I'm not aware of any termination clause that allows the village to unilaterally terminate the lease, no. We do have control over the use, and that was why this request was put in front of us. And the lease does have a limited term, it's a 10-year term.
That's renewable?
It is renewable.
At the tenant's discretion?
At the tenant, yeah, the tenant has to exercise the option to renew.
Was that 2016?
2019.
Was it 2019?
I believe, yeah. I was reading through the lease earlier today.
Well, the first lease or the second one?
Well, good point, but the amended lease, yeah, was 2020. The original lease was 2019.
Well, that's a good point, too. The original amount of the lease, I believe, was a 2,500, counsel, and then we...
Correct. We amended the lease and drastically reduced the rent from 2,500 a month down to 250 a month to facilitate the use as a popcorn store.
Well, I, for one, I like trustee Goff's idea of a museum, and I think that's the best use for the community. Anyone else on this?
I, yeah, I wish, I wish Berklin was here, because I know, when we discussed the multiple leases they had, they had not been paying lease payment, and he publicly asked for forgiveness, $30,000. So I mean, I would at least have, like, discuss with him their plans for that lease and that building. He said we can't unilaterally terminate, we can't unilaterally terminate, it would
have to be by agreement.
Yeah.
But there are terms in the lease, if the terms are not met, that...
Certainly, they have to pay rent, and they have to pay tax, because it's taxable, once it's a for-profit enterprise, utilizing the property, it's taxable. So, yeah, there are all kinds of requirements like that.
Counsel, a question. Do they have to pay the property tax irregardless of what's in there? Like, right now, it's empty, are they...
Well, yes, I mean, now, if it was a museum, that would be exempt, so there wouldn't be a tax to pay, but, yeah, the tenant is responsible for any tax that's imposed.
So they're currently paying the lease payment, which I assume they're current on?
Yes.
Yes, they are current. And they're paying the property taxes.
I did a check tonight to see if they paid the June installment, but I will check.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, there is a motion and to approve the change of use, so I'll, could you put that in the form of a motion to defer, trustee Kazam?
Yes, I make a motion, I would like to amend this to defer this until a further date.
Second.
All right, a move to defer this, second by trustee Gatt, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Counsel, you're all right with the voice vote on that?
That's mine.
Okay. It passes with one in opposition. Trustee DeVore.
No, I think she said, she said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about, thank you for correcting me on that. Okay, next is approval for the use of Tower Park on Saturday, September 2nd, 2023, for the Peoria Heights Congregational Church Concert. Trustee DeVore, if you're there, can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the use of Tower Park.
Your second?
Second.
Rick, are you here tonight to talk on this? Rick Pitzel, welcome, Rick.
Yeah, Rick Pitzel, I'm, do I need to add address or anything like that?
We know.
Okay. So the church, about 16 years ago, decided to try to have a concert with a nationally-known Christian artist every year. And so for the first year, we accomplished that, and so now we've been going for 16 years, and with the, the board's graces, they have allowed us to use Tower Park each year, and so that's what we're back here asking for again. We have a great crowd every year, you know, anywhere from 500 to 1,000 people, and people, you know, stay around, they walk downtown. I know I've been down to the restaurants afterwards, and, and so they stay in town and do a lot of business here, too. So if that would be allowable, I sure appreciate it again for this year. This year, our artist is Jordan St. Seer. He's a nationally-known Christian artist, played on WCIC quite a bit, so expect a good crowd.
Trustee DeVore, anything else you'd like to add?
Um, really, I'd like to add that this event is very successful and respectful in years past, and I think it's a great addition to, behind us, Tower Park.
Anyone else? Thank you, Rick. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is ordinance 2023-1706, an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 2 of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of increasing the permitted number of video gaming establishment licenses. Trustee DeVore asks for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve this additional gaming arrangement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Trustee DeVore, do you want to go first, or you want me to let counsel go?
Um, counsel can go first.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, we haven't tackled gaming licenses in a while, so just as a reminder to the board, the village board determines the number of available gaming licenses, and the mayor then processes applications and issues those licenses. In the rare event that we have a violation, it would be revocation proceedings, would be the mayor. So it operates basically exactly like a liquor license. Board determines the number of available, mayor issues licenses to specific applicants. This ordinance, as before the board tonight, is to increase by one the number of available licenses. I think it's from 15 to 16, if I remember.
Trustee DeVore, do you want to add anything before I jump in?
Um, I'm going to go ahead and let you jump in there, but if you don't, I'll talk to you, because we made a discussion about that.
I'll let you talk first, thank you. So this was prompted, I received an email from Chris McCall. Chris is a local attorney, and he's also the owner of Pilate Restaurant, and requesting a gaming license. So, Chris, I want to thank you for showing up tonight. Would you mind coming up? Would you mind coming up to the podium and tell us why you're requesting?
Mr. Mayor, Village, and esteemed guests, again, my name is Chris McCall, I'm a local attorney in town and I am co-owner of Yenies Pilate. If I can give a very brief synopsis as to how Yenies Pilate operates, we are a Mexican ice cream shop and we thank you all for your support since we've been here since March 5th of last year. The way the business operates is we are extremely busy from about March till about Labor Day weekend and then after Labor Day weekend, it dramatically slows down, almost to a halt because needless to say, around January or December, very few people want ice cream. And what we are looking to do is put three machines in a very, in one of the corners of the ice cream shop. We will still continue to operate as a family business and three machines will allow us to have revenue during the slow periods of time. And if I want to, if I can, just give my business partner Yenie props here, I want to tell you a little bit about how she is operating the day-to-day affairs. We recently won an award from the state of Illinois, Illinois Makers May in conjunction with the Illinois Office of Tourism for being one of the most unique businesses in the state of Illinois. We were part of four businesses that won that award. So in no way are we going to change operation from a Mexican ice cream shop to a, to a video game complex. We will continue to be a family-friendly Mexican ice cream shop, but we are just trying to make sure that we can supplement the income. Now, I will tell you something personal about Yenie and myself. Yenie was quoted as working 80 hours a week at the ice cream shop, but what she didn't mention is she has a full-time job. She works 40 hours doing community outreach for the Hispanic community. She does not generate any profit at Yenies Pilate because it is very important for us to be able to pay our staff and to make sure that we are not increasing our prices so we can continue to be supported by individuals such as those here in the audience. The video game licensing, licenses would allow us to generate more income in hopes that Yenie can begin to generate income in hopes that she can eventually leave her job and operate Yenies Pilate full-time. That is the reason we are making this request respectfully and we would ask that you consider it. And again, we haven't had one issue at Yenies Pilate, we haven't had one DUI over there. We are one of the most unique operations in the state and we take our reputation seriously. And hopefully, we've earned a little trust from you all and that we will continue to operate a very family-friendly business and the video game machines will be someplace in a corner where kids can continue to run in and order their Cookie Monster ice cream and the other chamoiladas and other things that people enjoy. Thank you for your time. Careful questions.
Well, I want to compliment you on your business. You're one of our favorite businesses in the Village of Peoria Heights and I think I have to cut my husband off from going to buy your popsicles. I appreciate also your comments on keeping it a family business. Whenever we're talking about something like, you know, dispensaries in our community and also gaming, it's something that we all take very seriously, but I also appreciate your need to keep your business afloat with this extra income. So you said that it would, they would be in a corner. I would like to move to add a wall or some type of obstruction without actually going into your, I mean, I've been in before, but without actually seeing exactly where you intend to put these games, I would feel more comfortable if there was some type of obstruction so they weren't visible as soon as you walk into the store.
That is something that we can definitely work with our landlord about. Jake Davenport, he will be, he's great to work with. And, and again, we want to make sure that we continue to be a family business and so we would have no problem putting up a wall to make sure that those gamblers will not be in the way of, of kids running in and out enjoying our ice cream shop. There are three different areas we were looking at, the putting, the lights, the, the machines. There is one area, right when you enter the restaurant, to the immediate left, where...
I know that area.
Right, where there's, it's just one table.
Right.
And also at the very far right, once you enter, there's another corner. So two different corners. There's also a corner on the south end of the business, which is the register. I would prefer personally not to put it by the register for obvious reasons because I don't want kids to see the gambling while you're sat, I don't want them to see quite as well the gambling. So my preference is to put it immediately to the left against the wall or immediately to the right against the wall.
If you approve this, I think council and Mr. McCall, myself and Chief Sutton can, can work that out. Do you agree to that, council?
Certainly.
Can I amend the motion to include cooperation with the business?
Well, if that's our, in, in my mind, we're approving a license, not necessarily for Mr. McCall, you're approving an additional license, which I would issue...
You're just adding an additional license, it may go to Pilate or it may go to somebody else, so it's, it's hard to do site-specific requirements in the licensing ordinance.
All, all I can say is, I mean, we hear you and, and I agree with that, I don't disagree. I, I think we'll, we'll make that, if, if you all vote to add more licenses and if I would issue one to Mr. McCall, which I, I would if you would add a license, then we'll talk about that and we'll make sure it's shielded and I, I hope your landlord, as you said, would agree to that. I am very confident Jake will.
Um, mayor, council, let me ask you this. I know that in previous gaming licenses, it's also tied to a liquor license, then, in order to have a gaming license, you must have a liquor license as well. State thought it was smart to join drinking and gambling, but in that, in that world we live in, if I recall, this particular business, I don't, I know it's, has an I license, which was a license that we created.
Right.
Um, that is a dairy-based liquor license.
Right.
Um, and I know in the past, when we've created gaming licenses for BP or Shell or whatever stations we're putting them in now, we, we gave them an A1 license.
Right.
Um, so is this, is for hypothetically, if we, does an I license work for, under the state gaming statutes?
The way, and I, and I looked at this specifically because I thought the same thing. Um, the way the state divides it, it's, you have to be able to serve alcohol for consumption on the premises. And, and the definition in the state statute is a retail establishment where alcoholic liquor is drawn, poured, mixed, or otherwise served for consumption on the premises. And their focus is on-premise consumption versus buying packaged goods and leaving for consumption off-premises. So I think even though it's a fairly unique license compared to the typical A1 or A2 as you brought up, it is on-premise consumption. So I'm, I'm confident the state would consider that a qualifier, but we don't make that determination. Ultimately, they got to get their gaming license from the state, so they're going to look at our license and determine and we, we don't make any promises when it comes to the state. That's completely up to the gaming department.
Okay. And you mentioned, sir, three gaming machines rather than five?
Yes, again, we want to make sure that we continue to operate a family business. Outside of Pilate, I'm an attorney, I've been involved in politics myself, I still am involved in politics and, and so I definitely want to continue to operate a family business. And as council understands, in our business, half the people walk away upset. I enjoy having a family business where 98% of the people walk away happy. And so we will continue to operate as a family business and the reason, the rationale behind three and not five is purely the economics. The way it generally operates, of course, the village gets a cut and the state gets a cut. By my math, that would leave between the individuals who lease us the machine and thus about $6,000 to split. $3,000 per machine, that would generate us $9,000 a month. That can make Pilate an even better business to operate and it can get the main owner enough profit where she can quit her job and run the business. It's, again, I'm giving her kudos here, it's amazing the job she's doing, running a full-time business and making ice cream till 2:00 in the morning. This will benefit the village because we are already recognized as one of the most unique and best businesses in the state. Now imagine if you have the main owner who can be there full-time.
Not everyone knows Yenie. Would you mind telling her story real quickly?
Yes, Yenie Rodriguez is, she became a U.S. citizen about three years ago. Her father worked at Nestle as a seasonal worker. She learned English by listening to American hip-hop music and so that is why, how she learned English and she decided at the turn of the year 2000 to chase the American dream because when her father was working over here legally, he applied for all of them to get visas, all the children, and so she decided to take advantage of her father's visa application and she moved to Chicago, she got married and then got divorced and she moved over here, married a chef, and she is now a widow. Her, her husband passed away. He was a chef and so that is when she really became to become reacquainted with culinary. And when she was a little girl, she operated an ice cream shop and convenience store. She is one of the hardest-working individuals you will ever meet. That's her story.
Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you. She is the epitome of the American dream and she did it by waiting her turn.
Any other questions or discussion?
Do you guys plan to stay in Peoria Heights even as you grow?
Absolutely. Peoria Heights took a risk on us and so we are very appreciative of Peoria Heights. We are embedded in the community and for those who've been to Yenies Pilate, a month or two after we opened, we started putting not just articles that were written about Yenies Pilate, we started putting up her family pictures, which shows her story from Mexico because we really feel that we are part of this community. And so the inside of Yenies Pilate looks almost like a living room with all of her family pictures. We're here to stay.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
I do, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, trustee DeVore, I forgot all about you. Forgive me, go ahead.
That's okay. Um, first of all, I want to say congratulations to Yenie for receiving the award for the Illinois Makers. That's an amazing accomplishment.
Thank you, Yenie and Chris.
I'm sorry?
Nothing, I was joking, I was joking, go ahead.
Um, being a fellow Filipino business owner myself, I do really empathize with the hardships of being a business owner in today's society and just going through all the struggles with that. I myself have not been in favor of video gaming in all of these different establishments. I don't personally feel that, that this kind of division is a hole that our country should see in emergency voting. So I just wanted to give an explanation, like I don't feel like, I feel like I need to take true to myself in the way I voted with this and I could, I am not in favor and will not vote in favor of them, but I don't want them to see a negative representation on how I feel about Yenies Pilate and how hard she has worked with her accomplishments in, within our village.
I appreciate your veracity, thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeVore. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
No.
Trustee Gat?
Aye.
Trustee Kazan?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes.
Thank you, everyone.
You and I'll be talking soon then.
Yes, thank you, mayor.
You're welcome, thank you.
You all have a great evening.
Uh, council, trustee, uh, thank you, sir. Trustee DeVore, I think does bring up a good point because I, I think a lot of us, we're reacting to these requests for licenses, often it's a liquor license and most recently it's gaming, it's with the gas stations or the Ivy Club. So I, I, I think we have a board that's not opposed to gambling, but I think, I'm, I'm wondering if maybe we've met a saturation point, so could the board adopt a, a policy, a moratorium or do we still just take things one by one?
Um, you can absolutely adopt a moratorium and I think this is not the only community that's struggling with that saturation point. And you got to balance revenue and other interests with, you know, you, you don't want to be a lost big strip. So the answer to the question is yes, you absolutely can either formally adopt a moratorium or just decide as a group. I mean, you vote on them one at a time and, you know, you can, you can start turning down. You do want to be careful, you know, turning them down site-specific because of the applicant and, you know, but that's, that's what you're elected for, so ultimately, that discretion rests with this board. So if someone wants to pursue a moratorium, I think the, the best approach on that would be to, to make that official, in the form of a resolution.
Yeah, not, not being on the agenda tonight, I'm going to move on, but if someone would like that on the agenda for, just for a conversation, not necessarily action, I'd be happy to put that on. Okay, we're at another action item, approval of a fire department option. Trustee Wigginton, I know, I want to thank both trustee Wigginton and trustee Weisberg, they both have options, so I'm going to let you start, trustee Wigginton.
Uh, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I think, yes, both, I think trustee Weisberg and I listened to your request that you've made, that asking for action, asking for direction from this board and I, I hope that one of these directions is the way that we proceed, whether it is the draft that I presented or the draft that trustee Weisberg has presented. The thing, the, the common denominator out of both of these plans is the preservation and support of our volunteer fire department. That is what both plans do. Now, as a, just to simply get things started, I will move, well, let me just start quickly just by saying that at our last meeting, we were all, all of us were here and we listened intently to the presentations of Peoria and appreciate the chief Solberg attending as well as our own volunteer fire department that came out that, that day. And what I got from those presentations was a plan that we could support the Peoria Heights Volunteer Fire Department, but still contract with the city of Peoria as in a support structure. This plan preserves the Peoria Heights Volunteer Fire Department and provides our community the level of service and public safety that our residents rely on. This plan provides much-needed relief to the self-described stress that our volunteer department is feeling with the high call volume, especially when it gets over 1,000 calls. Per my discussions with the volunteer firefighters, we're on a trajectory to well-outpace that number this year. This plan allows our volunteers to serve alongside the Peoria Heights, uh, Peoria firefighters and be noticed by other fire professionals, other fire professionals. Chief Reichert had noted that there were a lot of firefighters that have gone on to lead other departments and this could be very helpful for our volunteers who are looking for potential career advancement. This plan addresses the warning that chief Reichert gave us during the public comments section at our June 27th meeting. He warned us that dissolving the volunteer fire department and contracting with the city of Peoria could result in the loss of our volunteers forever. This plan prevents that. We will now always have the option to turn back solely to our volunteers and look for solutions in the future if the contract with Peoria does not meet our expectation in terms of service or in value. Moreover, the issue that trustee Weisberg discussed at our special meeting is also important. Now, he had trustee, our chief Solberg up here and was faced with chief artist's, former chief artist's quotes in various news articles where maybe the dispatching of fire equipment and personnel was more expensive than what our contract was looking like. And in essence, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Brandon, but the, in essence, your argument was that we were... your argument was that we were getting a pretty good deal and maybe just an introductory rate. And I'm all for a good deal, and if it turns out that this is just a bait and switch, under my plan, we have options to address that and we won't be putting all our eggs in one basket. Most importantly, as I've said to all of us from day one, and I think it's my focus and I think it's the focus of every single one of us on this board, public safety and what we can deliver to our residents. This plan doesn't reinvent the wheel. We contract with a provider that's already providing service via Mavis to our surrounding communities and well as to us. They have stated during the presentation that they can respond to our fires for the most part, 93% of the time, in four minutes or less, and their numbers they've presented back that up. I don't use the term hybrid plan. I use this term as a combo plan, combo. What I mean by that is we would maintain our Peoria Heights Fire Department with the chief. We'd leave it to you, Mr. Mayor, and as well as you, Mr. Administrator, to craft that position. I know in the past that, that has been a, more of a part-time position, but it has been a, kind of a malleable thing, so I would leave that to you.
I don't mean to interrupt, sir, but we, we do have applications and Trustee, Chief Sutton and I will be beginning interviewing next week, so I'm sorry to interrupt, but I wanted to interject that.
Appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. So Chief Solberg noted in his discussions that both fire departments interact well with one another when they're fighting fires, when they're fighting fires. Now, the days of the turf war must be over, and I have talked to Trustee Weisenberg about this, we've had our discussions. And I don't know if the sitting by the campfire and singing kumbaya starts here at Peoria Heights, because I know this is not just a Peoria Heights, Peoria problem. I know. But it must be over. We have to, in the interest of public safety, work together. AMT's Andrew Rand, and I appreciate AMT being here as well, said that we could dispatch both departments fairly easily. So I think that, in conclusion, we can have both, our cake and eat it too. Now, it's gonna be more expensive, I, I, I'll give it that, it, we'll, we'll pay, we'll pay for public safety. But if we're not paying for public safety, what are we paying for? So I move to adopt this combo plan and I would hope for a second.
Second. Okay, I'm gonna, in fairness, I'm gonna let Trustee Weisenberg explain his proposal. I, I think that's only fair. I asked you both, go ahead, sir.
I appreciate it, Mayor. Just to clarify, if you think, it isn't my proposal. It's a proposal our last three fire chiefs have given us. It was first introduced by Chief Walters, it was supported by Chief Thompson, and it is supported by interim chief, Mr. Schott. And I just wanted to touch on something that Bruce Brown had said earlier, as I discuss the, the options that our last three firefighter, fire chiefs have supported for the Village of Peoria Heights. It isn't just our identity, it is our role as a regional player. Not only do our professional firefighters come to the aid of the citizens of Peoria Heights, but we also offer a helping hand to the greater central Illinois community. Peoria Heights operates like most towns in the state of Illinois do. It is not a deficiency, it is actually a strength. One of the issues I have, if I can, Trustee Wigginson, with your plan, is we currently get the support of other communities right now at no cost. So I don't understand why we would enter into a contract to where we would pay for what we currently receive at, at no cost. Mutual aid is provided at no cost, the Mavis box is, or the Mavis responses are provided at no cost. If a community is at their limit, don't come. We have plenty of other communities in central Illinois that operate just like every other community in central Illinois operates. Mayor, I fear that contracting with the City of Peoria would have the same effect as outsourcing our fire department. It would have a devastating effect on the morale of the volunteers and it will make recruiting new volunteers even more difficult, especially considering the toxic opinion that Peoria has of volunteer departments. Last meeting, the Peoria Fire Chief wouldn't even acknowledge that our firefighters are professionals, but we expect them to operate under a contract and work together for the citizens of Peoria Heights. I don't find that realistic. I don't think any campfire, I don't think there's a campfire big enough to, to address that or to mend that, not that I necessarily don't want to see amended, but the options that Chief Walters presented to us in 2019, and I apologize, I had it up here, but, there were three options. One was to hire three part-time firefighters, part-time, and I checked with Chief Sutton and the numbers, I believe were fairly close, he said they're off by maybe 5,000. So option one, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, the other trustees were provided with those three options. Okay. So the option that I endorse is the most cost-effective option. It was the three firefighters, part-time, and it came out to a yearly cost of $117,000 on top of our current firefighter, uh, fire department budget. And the reason I chose this is it's the most cost-effective option. It starts off small. When we get the new fire chief hired, he can come in, assess the, assess the plan and then assess our needs and then as we need to grow, if we need to grow, we can gradually grow without jumping into a contract with Peoria that, considering the previous numbers, would almost double or triple our fire department budget. So option one preserves the identity and function of the Village of Peoria Heights to operate independently of another, another governing body. It keeps the costs in check. I believe this would be more cost-effective than contracting with Peoria unless there was a new proposal submitted. And it would also allow us to grow as we need to, without jumping into a fire department that's too large or too expensive.
All right, gentlemen, I've let you both speak, so I'm gonna open it up to the rest of the board and we'll come back to you after everyone else has had a chance to weigh in. Who'd like to go next?
Well, I just had to say that I agree with Trustee Weisenberg. I don't see why we should be paying for something that it's already, we could, as long as we call them, they're gonna, they're gonna come full steam. And I don't see, if we're gonna spend this money, let's spend it and invest it in Peoria Heights, not give it to Peoria. I mean, we already got, it's already got the mutual aid agreement and everything and I've a, I've been involved with this problem with the fire departments since Mayor Allen was in and the ambulance service had an attitude and everybody quit on us. And then we went down and talked to Mayor Artis and stuff down there in Peoria, and so I'm kinda to blame about the, I was right there when about paying Peoria to do this. But I've talked to people and I, I'm just voting, I'm just going with what the people I, who supported me and want me to, what they want. I kinda go with, I'm going along with Trustee Weisenberg's plan, well, Dalton's.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Gatt.
Well, I would like to make a few comments. First of all, it is, as Trustee Weisenberg said and Trustee Wigginson said, everybody's motivation to keep the residents of the Village of Peoria Heights safe. I tend to vote with the plan of Trustee Weisenberg because I think, in my view, it preserves our volunteer fire department while also supporting it. As Trustee Wigginson said, it eliminates the possibility of being backed into a corner, which I really appreciate. And I think if we do see the growth in our community and our village and we see, you know, new economic development coming in and we decide that at one point we have a large, you know, more funds to support a paid duty crew or something like that in the future, it gives us the opportunity to do that. And I also think that the words of Mr. Brown were not lost on me. I think identity is an enormous part of our community. I truly believe that and I think that the volunteer fire department is part of that. It's part of the fabric of our community and I would hate to see that go. And in my position, I want to do everything I can do to support it while also preserving the safety of our community and our residents. My hope for this plan would be that we would strengthen, actually, our volunteer fire department and potentially see those volunteers go on to be paid firefighters in Peoria or other communities. So that would be what I would like to see out of this.
Thank you.
I, I agree with Trustee Kazan on that, that we all talked about the safety aspect of this and, and to me, not a firefighter, you know, I'm, I'm not out there. To me, response time is everything. When your house is on fire, response time is everything. And if we can improve response time, we're improving the safety, the, of our citizens of Peoria Heights, their lives, their property, and I think that, that, you know, I, you know, I understand that, that there's a financial consideration, but this, if this plan is within our means, and it seems that it is, I, I don't want to put a price on the safety of, of our citizens. I hope I'm understanding this all correctly and that by moving toward a contract for the Peoria Fire Department to support our department, I think that if that improves response times and improves safety, it's important. And I'm all for keeping our, our firemen, our volunteer firemen, that, I, I'm, I'm sorry, in a way, that, that this wasn't a discussion a long time ago, there wasn't discussion a week ago or two weeks ago, that, that this wasn't the focus because I don't, you know, I, I do not want to see our, our volunteers go away. You know, they have a history with us and they've done a tremendous job for Peoria Heights, but as Trustee Wigginson pointed out, you know, they, there's a stress level there and I get that. I worked in an on-call situation for years and years and, and over the course of time, it wears on you. And if we can bring Peoria in as a, as a support mechanism for our, for our fire department, that's the way I'm seeing it. That's, that's what I, I'm leaning toward.
Let me ask Trustee DeVor before, Trustee DeVor, are you there? Trustee DeVor?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, you guys, my phone did cut out, um, so if you can't hear me, please let me In, sticking with consistency tonight, you know, since I have been elected into this position, it has been widely known that it has been very dedicated to keep the fire department as well as continue to enhance what we already have. For that reason, I would say that I'm favoring Trustee Weisenberg's proposal. You know, I hear all my other fellow trustees talking about how, you know, our volunteers are so important and we would like to preserve that within our community, but I just don't see how we keep on here and work in things we have, because we're looking at them and calling that, that we are willing to increase money or spend more funds to give to the, to the firefighters in the City of Peoria instead of investing additional funds into them or into their current environment. While I know that it's not all about the money, it is about public safety, like, we're looking at increasing over $300,000 from what I'm gathering to this fire budget, you know, if we invested that in our own community, I think many people have even stronger departments than what we already have. Although, I feel that Ash Sharkey, who we elected, basically for two reasons. Number one, to be the clear responsible, but number two, to be able to provide certain due to, and I personally just think that while the City of Peoria has an amazing fire department, they're just dealing with a little bit higher of the resource platform than what we are. But if we took these funds and increased the resources our own, our own firefighters have, how much could we increase what that department is already doing? So really, for that reason, I don't see, I don't, I don't see how option one worked because I think it's kind of a slap in the face for the department we currently have or anybody else who can come in. I think we do the hybrid model with the City of Peoria, while it does increase our response time, I think we lose our volunteers while we are backing the situation again in two years as, I think this will all need the identity we currently have.
Thank you, Trustee DeVor. So I'll go back to you, gentlemen. Go ahead, Trustee Weisenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on a few things that were mentioned, and for those listening at home and for those in the audience, we do have a support system, Trustee Goff. We, we have West Peoria, we have Bartonville, we have Dunlap, Chillicothe.
I understand.
And we have Peoria.
I understand.
All the departments around us are professional departments and they are, they are listening for that, for that call. Comparing our fire department and the structure to the City of Peoria is really apples and oranges. Response times are important. We meet the response times for towns and villages our size. If we want to improve response times, which I'm not necessarily against, we should do it by providing resources to our fire department. Again, the models of the two towns are not the same. The City of Peoria is not the rule on how fire departments are operated, they're actually the minority in the state. Most towns across Illinois and the United States operate just like we do. So I'm definitely in favor of providing whatever resources we need to our fire department to satisfy your concerns regarding the response times. But I don't want the citizens at home and in the audience to think that we're not meeting our response times, because as far as I'm aware, from what I've read, we do. Now, the response times between villages our size and the City of Peoria, those aren't governed the same, obviously, because we're, we're a volunteer department. But that's not, as I said earlier, that's not a deficiency. I actually think it's a strength. When you look at the cost of pensions, when you look at the cost of these departments and the likelihood of fires actually occurring, I think we get a much better deal with our volunteer fire department. Yes, we can improve. I don't think you can pick up the phone today and call any other volunteer fire department and they tell you, hey, we got the volunteers, we don't need anymore. That's not gonna happen. We do need more volunteers, but we need to invest in the city of, in the Village of Peoria Heights. We need to remain independent and we need to self-govern. And as Trustee Kazan had said, or maybe it was Trustee, uh, sorry, Trustee DeVor said, we are elected to provide services to the Village of Peoria Heights and that's what we're elected to do.
Okay, who wants to go next? Trustee Goff, you wanna respond?
I would say that, for one thing, I do take exception at being, at having Trustee Wigginson's plan described as a slap in the face to our department. I think the effort is being made to do the best that we can and I'm not here to disrespect our fire department. I respect our fire department and my only, my thoughts here is simply, I'm looking at public safety. I repeat myself over and over and I know we keep going back to finances and how much it costs, but at what price safety is, is my thought on that. I understand that, that there are, I understand what's being said by, by Trustee Weisenberg. I'm aware of the advantages to that aspect of things too. It's, this is not an easy decision. It's something that I feel like I want, I want to do the right thing, but I, I don't want to leave something undone. And one thing I know is that if, if we decide to attempt Trustee Wigginson's approach, his plan that he's presented, we can try this and a contract can be written that we can adjust ourselves to. And this is not something that we can, that, or I mean, rather, this is something that we can change. If this isn't working, we don't have to continue with it. We can, we can go on to a different, a different model, a different scenario. And I, you know, I don't, I don't like, I don't want to be cast in the role of that I'm, I'm against. the fire department, or that I'm supporting a plan that slaps them in the face, our volunteers, because I certainly do not support that.
I agree with what you're saying, Trustee Goff, 100%. And both of these scenarios are increasing cost. I think that what we need to be looking at here and what we need to be prioritizing is safety. And I keep going back to the word "support," because if this is successful, what I think will happen, what I hope will happen, is that we will have the city of Peoria with a four-minute response team and supporting our volunteer fire department, which will only strengthen over time.
Thank you.
Can I add something really quickly? When I had made the comment about that, it's not that I think any one trustee doesn't care. I think each one of us has worked really hard and very diligently to make this decision. We all have different objectives and personalities and opinions, but that's kind of what we're elected to do. So it's not, I don't think that one decision makes any trustee right or wrong. I think everyone is putting an equal amount of effort to collectively make the decision that they feel is right for our community.
Thank you, Trustee DeVor. Well said. Trustee Wigginton, go ahead. You've been patient.
Thank you. So, yeah, I've sat down with all of you, talked about this decision for over a month and a half, I think it's been, since we started down this journey. I've had many detailed conversations with our firefighters. Trustee Weisenberg and I sat down with some of the firefighter, some of the brass of our own department as well. So we all had very good discussions. And Trustee Weisenberg and I, again, the outcome, the common denominator, like I said at the very beginning, is the preservation of our fire department. What we all gathered here on our special meeting on the 27th, people were fearful that the fire department was going to be eliminated. Those fears can be washed away. That is not going to happen. It's not going to happen on my watch, okay? So what this plan, what my plan does, is it supports and assists our volunteer fire department. We have tried. I wasn't on the board in 2019 when the plan was to support and assist our volunteers by hiring a police chief. I was on the board when we hired an assistant chief, and I see some of us back in the room here. But we couldn't get those volunteer numbers still. So this is another out-of-the-box plan that hopefully addresses the problem, but Trustee Goff is correct. And I feel like this plan has a self-limiting clause, and counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, but any contract made with the city of Peoria to provide fire protection for our village can only be made through the end of Mayor Phelan's term. Is that correct?
There actually is an exception that does allow, if the board approves. And first of all, everybody understands, we don't have a contract in front of us, so this will have to come back. But with intergovernmental cooperation agreements, you can exceed the mayor's term. The recommendation is not to.
Okay. So, and the contract itself, I suppose, will have to be hashed out with our board as well as the Peoria City Council. Is that correct, counsel?
That is absolutely correct.
So this is just a path, my proposal is just a path forward. This is not an end-all-be-all, because there's still, buckle up, some more stuff to do. So, yeah, I would, I just, I agree with Trustee Goff's sentiment that we are all up here doing our best to provide that service, provide the public safety service to our residents, to our citizens. And, you know, as far as dollars and cents, I just can't think of anything better to spend it on.
Anyone else?
Just a question. So how are we going to handle the vote on this? I hate calling it Wigginton's plan, Weisenberg's plan.
I have a motion from him, I'm sorry, from Trustee Wigginton, who would, we would restate that plan, we would vote on that. If it passes, we would then next ask counsel to negotiate a contract. If it doesn't, we would, we're open for a second, we're open for a second. If it doesn't pass, then we would be open for another option.
So when we remove, we're going to specify that this is Trustee Wigginton's plan? Just because the line item just says...
Well, I'm going to ask the counsel, how would you like to see that?
Yeah, whoever makes the motion needs to make a specific motion, and you don't have to read the whole, articulate the whole narrative of the plan, but at least reference the key details, retaining the, all of the volunteers, but exploring a contract with the city of Peoria to provide a backup and support. The other one, I don't want to mischaracterize, but I'm just trying to limit this, more the Trustee Weisenberg plan would be not to explore contracting with the city of Peoria, but rather hiring additional employees within the Peoria Heights department on a part-time basis.
So there is a motion and a second. And Trustee Wigginton, are you okay with summarizing it the way counsel did?
If my second is fine with it, then absolutely.
Madam Clerk, do you get that?
I want to make sure I have this the way you want it, Trustee Wigginton and Trustee Goff. I have this as, Trustee Wigginton clarified, his motion was to preserve the Peoria Heights volunteer fire department and explore contracting with the city of Peoria. Is that correct?
What box is it? Okay.
That sounds good.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
The only thing, Mayor, that I would like to have a discussion about before we take the vote is the, as we've all stated, this has been an incredibly, and continues to be, you know, a difficult decision, which is what we're elected to do. And I want to take the temperature of my fellow trustees to see if we should consider amending the motion to include a requirement that the village place an advisory referendum on the ballot in the next election with, you know, language about the fire department to be determined by the Board of Trustees and the mayor. I don't want to confuse the issue with what's going on, so if we can do this at a later date, but I think hearing the voice of our residents can be very helpful.
Is that a motion?
Can I just make a comment?
Well, I don't have a motion yet. Let me get a comment.
I asked it as a question, as a discussion item, but I can make a motion, sure, I'll make a motion to include that.
That would include an advisory?
I can.
Did you just second it, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay, so the way, and I welcome this, and I applaud you all for bringing these solutions, but one of the things we haven't, in my opinion, talked about, as much as maybe we should have, is asking the opinion of the residents, and I think an advisory referendum would do that, so I thank you for introducing that. Would you, you've spoken as much as you wish on that. Okay, so, go ahead, Trustee Weisenberg.
Trustee Weisenberg, do you mind?
I yield to Trustee Wigginton.
So I do not believe that there is an advisory, there can be an advisory referendum on this very subject. And so I don't know if you have, you have the code in front of you, Mark? The 70 ILCS 705?
Just for clarification, there's all manner of different referendums that you can place on the ballot. And as we talked about at the special meeting, and everybody was here, we can't terminate the existence of our fire department without a specific referendum that would be a binding, not an advisory referendum. And it's very particular wording that's found in the statute. There's no drafting involved. I don't get to be creative, it comes straight out of the statute books. But you can always, as a village board, put any number of advisory referendums, again, not binding, seeking public input on any number of questions, including fire department issues, should we contract with the city of Peoria, you know, any way that you want to form that, but it would not, the clear point that you need to take away, an advisory referendum is just that, it is not binding. It just gives you the temperature of the public on a particular question.
I, the only thing that I feel, one, I can vote in favor of this amendment. I'm sorry, Trustee Kazam. I already know what, and I have said, what we've been saying this whole meeting, is that we are here to support and assist the fire department. So I cannot vote in favor of an amendment that we ask that, as an advisory motion anyway, because if they say they don't want it, well, then, two years later, you have to go back to the public and ask the very motion that the, the very referendum that the state statute says. So, one, what's the point? And, two, I don't want to talk out of both sides of my mouth. I just think that there's no point in advisory motion or advisory referendum. If we're going to ask the question, ask the question, but I just can't support it as this.
And Mayor, if I can, we need to be smart enough to figure this out. We need to quit nibbling around the edges. We started this conversation in 2019. Okay, it's 2023. Okay, we need two options to vote on, okay? Trustee Wigginton's plan, which is continuing by contracting with Peoria to, I don't know, subsidize or supplement our fire department. Or, I don't like the name of it, but the Trustee Weisenberg's plan of investing in our fire department and remaining independent. Up or down? All these amendments, we're going to ask people this, or ask people that. We're here to vote, we're here to provide these services. Let's just have a clean vote on the plans and be done with this. I don't understand why we keep nibbling around the edges. One, it introduces uncertainty, it makes recruiting volunteers even difficult, and we can't even get our votes straight here. So I would like to see just a vote.
Well, I don't, first, I want to be clear, I did not mean to muddy the waters. That's definitely not what I want to do. I feel very confident with my feelings today and the way that I'm going to vote. I just would like to, at some point, take the temperature of the residents in an advisory manner on this issue. So if this, as it's been amended, doesn't pass today, that's fine, but it's a conversation I'd like to have going forward.
And just to add, Trustee Kazam, I think we can make that motion as an advisory at any point.
You can do that at any time.
Right, and I would definitely support.
Well, you've got to be 89 days in advance of the election, but generally, yes, you can. If you're too close to the next election, it would be on the following election's ballot.
Separate from these votes, Trustee Kazam, I would definitely like to sit down and have a conversation with you. I disagree, but I just want to get the issue of the options sorted out.
I understand.
Anyone else on the amendment? All right, on the amendment, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
All right, this is on the amendment made by Trustee Kazam and seconded by Second Trustee DeVor to include a requirement for an advisory referendum on fire department services. Trustee DeVor, on the amendment?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Nay.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Nay.
Trustee Wigginton?
Nay.
Trustee Weisenberg?
No.
Okay, so the amendment fails. Back to the main motion, I'm going to call the question on that. If you're ready for the vote, does everyone understand? Madam Clerk, please read back the motion and the second.
Yes, Mayor, just a moment. All right, Trustee Wigginton has made a motion to preserve the Peoria Heights volunteer fire department and explore contracting with the city of Peoria. Trustee Goff has seconded the motion. Trustee DeVor?
Nay.
Trustee Gatt?
Nay.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
No.
Mayor, that's three to three.
All right, so we have a tie. I only vote, in the event of a tie, I vote aye. All right, so that passes, counsel, I guess you're directed to bring back the contract.
I'll contact Mr. Hayes tomorrow morning.
All right. We would be at miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous to come for the board? All right.
Yeah, Mayor, actually, I do. I'm extremely frustrated with your vote, but it is what it is. It could very well be the end of our fire department. But that said, the interview process for our fire chief, is that continuing?
Yes.
Okay. This governing body must advise and consent with that approved, with that, whoever you interview, whoever you choose, this governing body must, if it has a consent to that appointment. Because it is our duty to confirm this position, this government, this governing body should be involved in that process, I believe, from day one. I want to know who applied, I want to know who made the cut, who didn't. And I also want all of us to be able to have time to ask questions during the interview process.
Well, we haven't begun the interviews yet, so Chief Sutton and I will determine who we want to interview, and then we'll go through the process. I'll bring you a name, and you either vote it up or down.
I'm sorry, maybe I was clear. Because this governing body has to consent to this, can we be involved in the interview process? And we have the opportunity to ask questions of the gentleman or gentleman who may end up being our fire chief.
That would require, that would violate the Open Meetings Act.
We could post it.
So, no, I'm not agreeing to that.
Counsel, a question for you. Because it is our duty to advise and consent on this position, and it's obviously within our purview as the executive directors of the village, can we legally be excluded from the interview process?
It's up to the, mayor makes the appointment, and you provide the consent. So it's up to the mayor to determine the process.
And I, you and I are going to disagree on this, but I don't think it's a good idea to have a public meeting to have people interviewed. So I did that in the past, we had that kind of a roundtable appointed committee. I'll sleep on it. I probably wouldn't object to one trustee participating, but I'm not going to have an open session, I don't think. I'll think about it, but...
Mr. Mayor, one miscellaneous item as well, and so Trustee DeVor's not here with us tonight, but I hate to sound like a broken record, but on our village Peoria Heights website, we have prominently discovered Peoria on there, and when you click on Discover Peoria, it tells you some of the happenings that are happening in Peoria. And again, some of the things that are mentioned of happening in Peoria Heights is at Braskies Bar, which is up in, near Dunlap, they're having Ace Sippin' Sink Karaoke on August the 4th. And then on August the 8th, at the Peoria Civic Center, they're having RuPaul's Drag Race, We Row the World Tour. So I think my only concern is that when Discover Peoria comes back with the numbers telling us what items and all of our clicks and stuff, and how we're getting value for their service, that their numbers may be skewed, because they continue to advertise on Peoria Heights' website the activities at the Peoria Civic Center, Braskies, and other places. So I would just ask that Discover Peoria just limit it to Peoria Heights events that we're advertising with our dollars.
I agree, and you bring this up, I'm hoping, go ahead, Trustee.
Okay, I did reach out to Discover Peoria and talk to Ashley, who has been wonderful to work with about your question, Trustee Wigginton. I'm sorry to not report back on that, but due to all of the discussions we've had on the fire department, it has seemed as maybe a less pressing than it used to. Trustee Kazam was also included in the email with me about how there is some cross-promoting to encourage traffic from town to town, but those clicks and numbers that she provides to us, is it just like on our actual website? It is actual click on Facebook? Is it actual click on Facebook and Instagram, on things that specifically link to Peoria Heights? She had already scheduled for us to have our next quarter meeting with her, which we were just waiting for all, trustee Kazam, Sarah, and myself to find the answer. We got that date set, and she's going to go ahead and explain in a little bit more detail which clicks come from that, but just because other events are listed on our website doesn't mean that that is involved in our clicks. And she's going to give a more thorough handout to me for that, for, in our next evaluation.
Thank you, trustee DeVor. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I would just ask, you know, I know we've heard a lot about tonight, Peoria and Peoria Heights, and, but on our website, if we're advertising events, that we just stick maybe with Peoria Heights events.
I, I agree, and I actually-
I will definitely let them know that that's our preference, and I think they'd be more than happy to cooperate with us.
And, and, I mean, incidentally, I get the, some same comments about the chamber advertising other events, so I, I agree with you a hundred percent. We'll try and get this corrected, so you, hopefully you don't have to bring it up again.
Thank you.
Go ahead, trustee Weisenberg.
One last question, Mayor. Are you aware of the emails that have been retrieved from the city of Peoria regarding the Freedom of Information Act request between conversations with Chiefs Holberger and Councilman Chuck Gray?
No.
Okay. So I will be releasing those emails publicly, that I believe they've already been released publicly in some fashion, but it was Chief Holberger saying that the agreement with the city of Peoria, Village of Peoria Heights would ultimately favor Peoria. They called us medieval. They spoke fairly poorly of volunteer fire departments, Mayor, and entering into a contract with the city of Peoria is like making a deal with the devil. It is wrong. We should be focusing on the village of Peoria Heights.
All right, bring it to a conclusion.
I got the floor, Mayor, and I hope-
I'm letting you have the floor. We've already voted on this, but go ahead.
This is under miscellaneous business. The topic is, are you aware of the emails?
I'm not.
So I'm not, I'm not talking about the vote.
Please send them to me.
Uh, this is a mistake. And once I make it clear to the citizens of Peoria Heights, the discussions the city of Peoria has had, and what they think of the village of Peoria Heights, I hope that when we discuss this contract, that the citizens of Peoria Heights will come out in favor of rejecting that contract. But I will make the emails painfully evident here in the coming days.
All right, thank you. Any other miscellaneous? We'd be at the treasurer's report. Madam Clerk.
As of the end of June, there was $7,564,177.53 in the village-controlled accounts. There was $2,135,147.67 in the water-controlled accounts.
All right, you've heard the treasurer's report. I would ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Moving seconded. Any question on the report, discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is payment of the bills. I'd ask for a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
A second, please.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to pay the bills. Any question on any of the bills, discussion on the motion? All right, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Trustee Gatt?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded, and all those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, or adjourned.